BLO, ready to go? We're gonna jump right in and talk to us from there. The quicker you are in charge.
Excellent, I'll be in charge. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lacey Upton. I'm the Director of Community Engagement at Boston Learre Opera. It's great to be here, and I have all of my colleagues here to help support throughout the presentation, and they'll be introducing themselves one by one as they come up to go through their portion. So I'm gonna start us off with just a little bit of kind of background about the organization and context using this, our current season that just closed in May as an example for some of the challenges and projects that we're taking on with accessibility moving forward. So you'll see our mission statement up here. Boston Learre Opera is a 42-year-old company. We produce four operas per season, which runs usually September through May. For about 17, 18 years, we were based at the Schubert Theater downtown, which is part of the Bach Performing Arts Center. And beginning in the 2016-17 season, we actually moved to a model where we are moving venues with each opera. So this is, we just closed our third season of this kind of new model of working. Because of that change, we are working in both traditional theater spaces and non-traditional spaces. In that three years, we have created our own box office, because when we were in residence at the Bach Center, we were going through telecharge along with all of their sort of constituent organizations. So we now run our own box office and kind of audience services team. And so all of this moving around has required us to create a lot of infrastructure, both in the organization and literally in the space when we move into a venue for each opera. So using this past season as our sort of example season, we opened in, it was October this year, with The Martyr of Seville at the Emerson Cutler Majestic Theater. So that is an early 20th century, you know, sort of traditional proscenium house in downtown Boston. Our next was Schoenberg in Hollywood, which was a world premiere commissioned work that was at the Emerson Paramount Center. So again, another sort of traditional proscenium house, although a smaller venue in downtown. And then we had two site-specific installations. The March production was Burton's The Rape of Lucretia, which was at Artists for Humanity, which is in South Boston, and it actually is in an art gallery space, which is very, it was recently renovated, so they added a new portion to it. Basically, the point that I'm getting to is that it's a very weird shape. It had a number of sort of structural pillars that were kind of in the middle of the space and just made sort of seating and viewing challenging. And that is actually the work that you'll see a little bit later. That's what we used as our user expert site visit experience. And then we closed our season this year in May with the opera version of The Handmaid's Tale at the Lavida's Pavilion at Harvard University. Despite the fancy name, that is a basketball stadium. So it was a really amazing installation. But again, we had, you know, sort of the traditional bleacher seats. In that particular stadium, they have the bleachers that you sort of associate with the basketball stadium, and then above them are several rows of chair seating. And then we also, on one end of the stadium, built and installed risers with sort of more traditional stairs. And then the orchestra was on the opposite side with the plane in the middle, so it was sort of three-quarters in the round if you kind of want to think about it that way. So this was a great season in terms of we had sort of two more traditional experiences, and then the installations are always many more variables to deal with. Beyond our full opera productions, we also do a variety of community events and events for donors and patrons and all kinds of community members who might not be or just sort of passersby. So these are a few of the partners that we worked with this year for some of those more community experiences. So especially coming into the ILN trainings, we spent a lot of time talking about what we have control over versus what we don't in these rented spaces. There are always some things that we wish we could change about the space that we, since we're only in residence for a short time, we just aren't able to. Whereas in an installation, we have a lot more control over the types of infrastructure that we're putting in. And so we have to try to balance that with what we communicate effectively to our patrons in advance so that they can know what to expect and what that experience will be like. Through our trainings through ILN, we also learned a lot about what our patrons' expectations were, both through the user expert feedback that we got through the report, but also doing these trainings made us really do a deep dive into our patron surveys. So we also have a lot of that data collated in our presentation today that we'll be sharing. We talked a lot about this as kind of maneuvering the potholes and figuring out how we can work with the spaces that we're in, even if we're not able to patch in the way that we might like to. And then for us, the biggest kind of takeaway was that communication piece, was knowing what, how, and anticipating the questions that our patrons are going to have so that we can take care of them in advance. All right, I'm gonna turn this over to Kathy for some of our user expert site visit.
Hi there. My name is Kathy Emmons, and I'm a member of the External Relations Team who went through the user, audience post-performance surveys and sort of matched that up against some of the responses from our user experts. It's like when you point your cellphone at the TV to get a... Okay, and these, the demographic figures, while I singled out The Rape of Lucretia to match up against our user expert survey, a lot of the sort of data really comes from all four of our productions, and I tried to extract what are some really compelling commonalities between the two. Our audiences definitely tend to skew older, and for The Rape of Lucretia, which had a real richness of response to our post-performance survey, we had 121 responses, I think it was, to the email survey. And of that, 60% were over the age of 65. Yeah, 65. And in that, that 60% was 30% who were 65 to 74, and another 30% who were over 75. And so a lot of the audience members in the open-ended survey responses would describe age-related gradual loss of mobility, of vision, and to a much lesser extent, hearing, but I think that's maybe a function of the fact that they were going to a performance to listen. And then finally, while they described these issues, they didn't necessarily identify as members of the disability community, but they did expect accommodation. Our user experts who attended the Wednesday, March 13, thinking it was, performance of The Rape of Lucretia were an elderly man who is legally blind and hard of hearing, a middle-aged woman who has low vision, and a middle-aged woman who is a wheelchair user. Their responses to the building exterior were many, and these are paraphrased. In general, they felt that the venue needed a lot more BLO branded signage, because while we had given directions to the facility, they couldn't actually find where in the building to enter and didn't know where to be dropped off. And so some of the suggestions were maybe have people have more signage or especially have people outside as greeters. Because that was March, we might not have seen that as a, you know... And because we're pretty thin on the ground for staff, so we didn't necessarily implement that immediately. But we did take it under advisement for Handmaid's Tale, which happened in May. They found the automatic door to be well-aligned and easy to use. It swung in the right direction. And that was something that we don't necessarily consider in advance of our facilities, so it was great to think about that as we go into planning for the next season. Their responses to the theater space were many, and again, aligned really closely with what some of our audiences said too. Wayfinding was pretty challenging in general. Seat assignments didn't seem very straightforward, and especially for low vision, we would have liked some closer to the stage. They were sort of in various spots. Ideally, we would have liked them located near an exit as well, because one of the user experts didn't realize that there was no intermission and got up to leave during the performance. And I think that was a particular challenge. And finally, this was one of the greatest areas of commonality for both our user experts and our audiences, the visibility of surtitle screens, which we have at virtually every performance, but which our user experts took as an assistive device, were hard to read in a lot of cases. And the emergency exit signage wasn't necessarily as visible as they may have chosen. And last but not least, these are the photos that we were supplied, and we're really grateful for them, because it gives you a really immediate sense of what some of the challenges were. In the center, as you came in, there was one staircase that led from the entry and box office areas down into the performance area. You came down the one staircase and made a hard left... I don't know my right from my... ...to go around and into the seating. So it wasn't necessarily intuitive. And then the signs that you can see on your right were a little bit hard to see. And then finally, you can see on the left some of the seating area, and it could be just a little bit difficult to navigate. But these photos really give us a great big thank you moment, because you would think from photos like this that our user expert visit debrief might have been kind of challenging, but it was really overwhelmingly reaffirming and very positive. And so we really thank our colleagues for this opportunity. Web site updates.
Hello, I'm a little shorter. There we go. I'm Madison Florence. I'm Marketing and Communications Coordinator at BLO. So I'll take us through a little bit of what our website updates will be. And this most of focus is on kind of how we're communicating with our audiences rather than maybe making changes to our venue. These are things that we can kind of forewarn and give people advanced notice about before they attend our performances. So what we have here is our homepage. This is when we had the website audit that went through and told us what was good, what was not as good about our website. So in our homepage, we have these sliders that slide by, and our main menu, which is pulled up here, drops down with different options you can click on. And this is just kind of what our general look is. It has darker borders, the red lines. This is a little text-heavy page. You can kind of see what the writing and everything looks like just for an idea of what our website is. So what we did is after looking at this audit, we made some changes with our new season. We changed some of the branding, some of the colors, some of the look of our website. And along with that, I've been working with our website designer, Jay, on how to make these changes and make some accessible moves and kind of get us going in that right direction. So some of our current projects that we're working on, starting from a few weeks ago up through probably the end of July time, maybe the mid-July, would be working on doing some of these improvements. First, we have the Drive Independent Control/Keyboard Accessibility. So that would mean you were able to hit the tab button or use a device other than a mouse to click through our website. It was something that we weren't able to do before, and it's actually already been fixed. So we've already made that improvement to be able to tab through our whole website and get to where you need to go. Next is we have flipboxes on our new ticket page. So when your mouse goes over the ticket, like show box, it'll flip over, allowing you to click the Buy Tickets button. If you're using the tab button, that doesn't happen. It doesn't flip, so you can't see the button. So we're creating a second option of a place you can go. Oh, I'd like to buy tickets. This is the polyacti. And you can click on it at a separate location on the same page. And finally, on our homepage, we have the animated elements, the sliders I mentioned. And they go by a little bit too fast. If you have to read slower, if you're using an assisted device to try and get through all the text there, it just goes by too fast. So we're working on something that will go with our spec of our website, but also allow you to pause it or go back to it if you'd like to review it again. And these are things that are like easy fixes for us, and it was just something that we could do now as we're switching into our new season. Kind of our midterm projects, some of this happening over the next few months into possibly a year from now. We're working on our videos, making sure we've updated some of the captions and make sure there's like alt text and some descriptions and things like that to go along with them. It's something we hadn't done before, but we're working on including them from here on out. We're also improving the color contrast on our website. With the update to our new season, we have a lot of bright colors going on. And there's some things that just are hard to read, so we're working on kind of how we can adjust that and fix it in the future. We're also building an accessibility page, which would have everything from... Oh, we provide assisted listening devices for our performances to here's a digital online large print program that you can access ahead of time or during intermission, things like that. And also potentially contact information for either designated person, already on our staff, who would be our accessibility point person, or if we get to the point where we actually hire a separate person to serve as our accessibility person. And then finally, we'll be the site by navigation, which would just be making sure that our menu bars are reasonable, that it makes sense, and the buttons are clicking on which of the pages you want to be and kind of looking at how our users are traveling through our website so it makes it as efficient and easy as possible. Right now, we have superfluous webpages and ways that like not get you all over the place. So we're trying to fix that. And then our longer-term projects, this gets a little bit more technical. We have design headings, so things like when you're making your webpage, and it says Heading 1, Heading 2, Heading 3. Most of us use that as, oh, big text, medium text, small text. In reality, when you're using a different device, it's reading it as 1, 2, 3, and if you for some reason mix them up, it makes it really hard to navigate. So we're trying to work on learning more about that and also applying it across our site and emails and all of that other technology side of things. Our forms, so where you enter your email, where you sign up for events, things like that. We're trying to find a way to make that accessible without having to click into it with a mouse. Right now, we're not really sure how, so that's a little bit of a longer-term project for us. And finally, is just maintaining the whole website. I went through and assigned pages to everyone on our staff and said, oh, this department's definitely in charge of these pages. Marketing, you have to take care of all the video and PR stuff that you haven't been doing for the whole year. But just making sure it's all up to date and that the photos have captions all through the text and things like that. And that's like an ongoing long-term project that we'd be doing and kind of backtracking through. I'm gonna pass it off to Rebecca.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Kirk. I'm the Manager of Education Programs. And for this project, I took on looking into how we can add or edit closed captions through our YouTube, our videos that are already uploaded on YouTube. And for the education department, we have a couple that we use already in schools, and they're evergreen. And so I took those on to make sure that the captions were accurate and looked through that process. And so this slide sort of illustrates my first challenge was just sort of the accessibility of finding where you edit those things, which is quite varied on the YouTube site. And it took a lot of flicking around to figure out where do I even start. But once I did find those pages, which I sort of tried to demonstrate a little bit here, then actually it was fairly straightforward and pretty easy and was able to make minimal corrections. The biggest thing I had to do was because our videos were already produced, our videographer in the final edits put name captions for the people speaking at the bottom of the screen, and it overlapped so that you couldn't read the caption and see who was speaking at the same time. And so I tried my best to edit the captions in small bites so that it would minimally overlap, but it was still an issue. And it's something that we learned going forward in making new videos in the future, or potentially we could go back and edit this one to change where the placement of the people's names who are speaking are on the screen so that all of the information is easily accessible to everyone. And so there are two videos now that are done, and as Madison mentioned, hopefully we can go back. The other thing we really want to learn and look into is how to do this on our social media through the videos that we post on Facebook and also other video platforms. On YouTube, it's pretty built-in, and have to investigate how to add that in the future to our other videos. And I also actually looked into some alt text, and it's actually quite straightforward on our website. And so I'm assisting Madison to implement that retroactively as well over the next year and a half, or whatever, how long it takes. Great, and I'll pass it off to my colleague.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Kittredge, not to be confused with Rebecca Kirk. I'm the Audience Services Manager at BLO. And so that means as we have moved into this nomadic sort of format, I'm not just in charge of all the ticketing. I'm also in charge of everything front of house. So this particular initiative was very high on my list of priorities. And so as we sort of went through all of the sessions and sort of have been evaluating our processes, I went through and made an audience experience list. It's about two and a half pages long currently. I think it will get longer. And basically, it's like what do we need for a good patron experience? What does our audience need? And so as I've been doing it and going over it again and again, it really starts at the design. It doesn't just start at like putting tickets on sale or like, you know, putting information on, or what's the venue, or what are the dates. It really goes further back, and it goes all the way to, you know, building the website, selling tickets. What does the purchasing path look like? How do people get there? What information are we giving them before they're getting to the venue? And so these are just a couple highlights of things that are on this two-and-a-half-page list. And so production page on the website. So I've been working with Madison and Jay to, as we're prepared to launch our production pages for our new season, just have one page for everything for that show. Where it's gonna be, how you're gonna get there, what's the parking? What are the nearby restaurants? What's the accessibility like? What do we have? What do we not have? You know, so everything, just so you can go, and it's there in a clear, concise way. And then that information sort of segues into our pre-show emails. We call them Know Before You Go emails. And so it sort of includes that information again. We're so excited to see you on Sunday. Here's this, here's this, here's this. If you have questions, you let us know, and we're gonna get that for you. You know, because one thing that we did find with our spring shows, you know, people who use ride, people who use, you know, ride shares, people who use taxis or, you know, can't walk very far from their parking spots, they were asking questions. And especially in the main spaces, designating that information and being as specific as possible is really important, and it makes their experience a lot better. And then wayfinding, more than just signage. Like, it's highlighted in my brain. It's not just getting around a space, but it's getting to the space, especially when it's a new space, especially when it's a basketball court on a college campus. You know, like, you know, you have to help people because they don't know, you know? And, you know, a good example of this, me and Madison went through, and we walked from the Harvard T-stop to the Lavida's Pavilion, and we took photos as we went. You know, this is what you're gonna see. You're gonna take a left at the Curious George store. You're gonna keep going down the street. You're gonna see this, and you're gonna do this. And then she made this fabulous little video that some people used. And so it's just little things like that. It's just, it's really easy, and you sort of have fun doing it. And it's just like, you know, really innovative ways to make it more accessible to people so they know where they're going. And then, you know, again, accessibility information. So making that information available for patrons on the website. And we're working on putting together an accessibility page that's gonna have everything really, you know, cohesively, clearly put together. And then one thing as well is better staff training. Just, you know, people who are there full-time, my front-of-house staff who's only gonna be there for the five performances, they, you know, making sure that they know what they need to know, and they are empowered and have the tools that they need to make sure that they can help people without like, oh, can you, sorry. Like, oh, can you wait here for five minutes? And then let me find someone who might know the answer. You know, that's never fun. And so this, so when we're building our purchasing paths to buy tickets, and this is an example of what a single-ticket purchasing path is gonna look like sort of the bare bones for an installation. And the reason is, you know, you can't select your seats on this because the space doesn't exist yet, because I don't have the layout from our production team yet, because you've also noticed the venue to be announced. So we're missing a couple things here. So as we get more information, you know, I like to add in colored and labeled maps that are gonna have sections so people can decide which section they want to sit in that works with their budget. I also am working on finding ways for people to select different accessibility needs instead of having to write out an order note for us. So this is sort of the bare bones. And then, there we are. And so for a traditional venue, we can build a map, you know, because I already know what that looks like. And this, the Cutler Majestic is a space that we've been in several times before. And so this is what a select-your-own-seat map looks like with our ticketing system, Testatura. And so the different price zones are different colors. And then wheelchair seats have a little symbol in them. And then companion seats are a completely different space. So and you'll also see when you hover over, if a seat has been designated for a wheelchair, it will say it. So, you know, always looking to sort of find more options in these as well. I will say, if you're wondering, well, why don't you just, you know, once you get the layout for the non-traditional spaces, you know, build a map there, it's because it costs some money. And if you're only gonna have it exist once for five performances, budgets. So that's sort of the basics about our purchasing path. You know, we're always looking for new ways to make it easier for people, so it's not just, I'm gonna write an order note, but really like, oh, these are the options, this is what they can provide, and this is, you know, I know that I'm gonna get it. So we're constantly sort of researching on new ways for that.
And now, Lacey. So this is kind of the section where we're both timelining out some of the things that are in progress and then some of those longer-term items that we don't quite have a home for yet. So we've already started creating timelines of some of those website changes that you saw earlier in the presentation, but we have yet to create timelines for some of the longer-term things and things that aren't like a clear website fix. So that's one of the things we're working on. A big thing that we discovered throughout this training is also how do we integrate our production and artistic teams and staff members into this conversation on a consistent basis? Most of these trainings were geared towards what, in our company, we would call External Relations Team members, but sort of that front-facing wing of your organization. But a lot of the issues that we're sort of contending with also involve heavily our production staff that is designing and building and engineering those installations, or the artistic staff that is working with directors and designers to, you know, determine what the experience is going to be like. So we talk a little bit more about this later, but figuring out how to make them part of the conversation on an ongoing basis is a big sort of priority for us. And then one of our other priorities is designating that accessibility staff member. Right now, all of those questions are following to Becca and the Audience Services team. So I think our immediate plan is to identify one of them to sort of serve as that point person, but then in longer term, in the next couple of fiscal years, we're looking to try to add that as a point position. And as far as communications, and especially that... And as far as communications and especially that issue of wayfinding, based on all of this feedback that we're getting, we're trying to create some very branded signage so that no matter which venue we go to, patrons can start seeing the same signage. And if there's consistency in there, you know, we can build some of those with, that aren't just flat signage, but things that incorporate Braille or even other types of tactile elements that can travel with us from place to place. Right now, our only option for a larger print program is for it to live online. So we're thinking of creating sort of a secondary program that can be large print, or at the very least advertising or telling people that the programs live online because right now that's kind of just internal information that you might not know. Okay, so this is just a little bit more detail on that issue of kind of engaging the production artistic staff. So involvement in trainings like this and awareness. It mentioned earlier, surtitles are a big part of our audience experience across the board. So those are part of the artistic experience. They tell you what the words are, they're cued with the music, they are an integral part of seeing an opera. But people don't always know that they're going to be happening before they come. Or they may not be able to see them from where they're located depending on the installation. So that's another point of where sort of the front-house experience dovetails with the design experience that we really need to smooth out that process. Another thought that we're looking to do sort of in the longer term is integrate accessibility into designer agreements and contracts so that those expectations are set from the beginning along with when their set models are due and when their engineering plans are due. And then another sort of longer-term plan is engaging user expert consultants or sort of staff-level accessibility coordinator for all of our venues. The end.
Well, I for one loved the video. Loved the video. Yeah, it was easy, it was fun, and I knew that it wasn't going to be a far walk from Harvard, even though it was boring. Comments, ideas, suggestions, resources? The comprehensive short and long-term goals?
Just curious, you mentioned you have issues with the surtitles. Was it mostly just like the distance of venue or toward some of it?
Sure. So mostly it was distance, especially some of the like the user expert feedback about folks who were in low vision or had those low vision. And so part of that, I think, could be addressed in that purchase path option, you know, that might, we could know that that person is low vision and just place them appropriately, especially in an installation where we are able to seat them with a little, they're not selecting their own seats. And then part of it is also in installation or even really in traditional venues where we are putting up screens, is where are we placing those screens and are there obstructions in the way, which we obviously try to avoid as much of that as possible, but it can be tricky to get the sidelines perfect. We've also had people like on social media, oh, thank you, commenting like, oh, can I come see this even if I can't hear or don't, I'm hard of hearing. And we had to explain like, oh yeah, we have basically a form of subtitles almost for the opera performance that you can read along as you're watching the show. And people just don't know they exist because if you have an opera, you don't know that.
I'm kind of wondering if the saying program that is used for art, like remote art, if people are able to pull it up on their phones and that they can do your, like...
Yeah, there are definitely apps out there for that. We've looked into a couple of them. I mean, it brings up a whole other set of issues about around people using their phones and having the glowing screen. So it's just a larger conversation and some artistic teams or have more of an opinion about that than others in terms of, you know, what the theater experience is like. But it's definitely something that is out there and some of them are designed specifically for opera. So yes and maybe.
I just want to add that one that does lead into the greater conversation that I am a big proponent for is balance of artistic vision and accessibility. It's a big struggle in performing arts and I often feel that it's an uphill battle. And I think it's something that really needs to be, you know, evaluated and fixed. But also, I went to AR to you a couple of years ago to test out this app called GalliPro. And so it's got different colors and you have, you know, it's just, it's not really alarmingly bright. You log into a specific Wi-Fi network so you know your phone's not buzzing during the show and you can select colors and font size. So definitely check it out. Some shows on Broadway use it. You know, and I did some, you know, tentative research into what those costs would be, you know, in the longer-term plans, but very interesting thing if you're interested in looking at that.
Yeah, GalliPro can certainly get more expensive, particularly if you're traveling, but it does give you those options and then looking at audio description as well. Again, that's a type of a solution for a person who couldn't see something further away. The other thing that I really thought, and I was curious, other theater committee members, is putting your designers and people you hire to the test of your vision. So yeah, you have a case. So we're as successful as A, B, C, and D, so you need to meet those to come work for us. Good luck. And good luck. Alexandra.
I was curious, on the video caption, I was hearing that's something we're trying to get underway. And I had looked quickly at some of the suggestions from the, you excited to suggest with a site, WGY. And I, and I looked and it was not easy to figure out. And everybody's told me to stay away from YouTube because the background is so bad. So I was curious, have you looked at other options than just GalliPro?
I didn't thus far. I think I've got something that we're open to, especially when there are videos on other platforms that aren't YouTube. I actually was really surprised, though, in the cases of the two videos I edited, that the captions were pretty accurate already. And a lot of it was just spacing it out so that they didn't come too fast and you could read everything.
Can you talk about how to capture singing?
Oh yeah, that's true. It didn't capture any of the singing. So I did have to type out what the students were singing and also indicate that they were singing. Obviously, you could tell because they're on stage. But to be able to indicate the difference between speaking and singing.
I would love to get your screen grabs of the process. It would be our marketing manager would be happy.
I'm going to share all of the work, so you will get it.
There's some in our presentation and I took a few extras as well.
Yeah, you're the extra. I'll get that.
Yeah, because YouTube is audio-driven, but you will need to edit it. Cadet, which is from WGBH, is not audio-driven. So it does require a, Cadet would be for the filmmakers, not the casual film of the student or I'm going to capture this moment. I'll probably talk to Kathy and her team about that. Because for these works, these are being filmed and then they're going to, you know, be put on the website. Obviously, I'm going to want to have the model, the behavior. And Cadet, again, is a deeper, deeper dive than that. But it's a language I highly speak.
And those education videos were already on our YouTube channel, so it was easy for us to just kind of stick with that platform in terms of figuring out some of the media that we already have available on our website.
I've also looked at like, personally transcribing things. I've done it before. It takes like 20 minutes for every one minute of video, if you're really fast enough for a while. Just roughly. But that's like something for the future. If we wanted our video person to actually put it onto the actual video, it would probably take a little bit more of my effort.
We found with video production that in some cases, we had scripts of interviews that we needed just to be able to select what to put in the video. And so we were able relatively easily to put a script of what is in the video, but then it's figuring out the best way to then fit that into the caption format.
And there is, and I think it was Steve from PYD when he talked about the marketing, he provided, and I'll check back, because he provided a resource for sending your video out, having it captured and coming back. So there's a number of different options. More comments for the opera while we have them? I would say.